Hi, I'm Julie Thompson. Welcome to the Plymouth Select Board Candidate Interview. I want to take a moment to thank our candidate for participating in this interview and collaborating with PAC TV to bring this informational programming to residents and voters this election season. Let me explain the format. We will be conducting a one-on-one interview-style Q&amp;A format with each candidate lasting approximately 30 to 40 minutes. Responses will not be timed, and follow-up questions may be asked during this format. We aim to ask up to four questions, but that will depend upon the length of the responses, along with any follow-up discussion during the exchange. Candidates will be allowed to address anything not covered, or something they would like to add clarification to at the end of the interview in their closing remarks. So, we're gonna get started. Today, we're speaking with Charlie Blitzer, one of the four candidates for the Select Board in the Plymouth Town election. Charlie, thank you so much for joining us today.
Well, thank you so much, Julie, for having me again this year. I really appreciate it.
Okay, we're gonna go right into it. I'm gonna do a little preamble. Many people who responded to our inquiry for questions that they would like the candidates to answer included questions about behavioral integrity of some members of many different boards and committees, and also how and where information is communicated was also a concern that came up. So, question one. The behavior of members of the Select Board have come under scrutiny over the past few years. Many "debates on multiple topics" have taken place over social media and in venues that are not of an official nature. In 2013, a procedure was established governing the use of official town social media accounts, as well as guiding principles of conduct and decorum for all town employees, board and committee members, town meeting members, and any others involved in the town's governance. Do you believe that these policies and procedures need an update for 2022? And what would you base that on? And what would you recommend for guidelines and standards in regards to communicating in general, and specifically via social media or other non-sanctioned platforms?
Okay. Well, I don't know. First of all, the information using social media, I think any public official should only put facts out on social media. I don't think opinions should ever be put out as a public official. You know, and I encourage, like, for instance, Chris Bardot is putting out now, he's putting out town information on the website, and it's town information. It's factual, and it's very helpful. The Town Manager's Report, another thing that should be published. I think we should have an dedicated information officer that can get any accomplishments or any information from town meetings, for instance, the Select Board. He can report on what happened at the Select Board, because a lot of people can't watch it or can't get there. I mean, face-to-face is the best form of communication, and I welcome, I encourage people to come to our Select Board meetings and come face-to-face, because they can ask questions there. But a lot of people can't do that. They're busy, they have other things going on, so I think we need to have, I'd like to have a dedicated site, given just, given facts and information for the residents, so they can see what's going on. They have to know what's going on in town. Saying that again, there were some, I'm not, I'm not one of those members that likes to really go on Facebook, social media, because, you know, I find that if you get on social media, you're gonna, you're gonna have people personally attacking you, and the worst thing you can do is respond to it, because then you get down to their level, and then you, then you give them credibility, let's say it like that. One time, I made the mistake recently, one time, calling somebody a name, and somebody quickly corrected me that as a public official, you have to be better than that. And I answered back, "My mistake. It will never happen again." It's the first time it happened, it won't happen again. I get baited. So, that being said, the behavior, well, let's go into the behavior. I can't, personally, I'd like to see rules and regulations for a couple of things. I'd like to see less activity on social media with public officials, I think. But again, that's personally, I'm not involved in it, but in, I don't like to be critical of other, of other officials that are doing it, if that's, if that's the way they want to do it, but they, they open themselves up to serious criticism, so. But let's go to what we just had recently. We had a committee member, but let's talk about behaviors of committees. All our committees, and we're lucky, we have a lot of committees in Plymouth, and we have great volunteerism in Plymouth, and we have a lot of knowledgeable people, and I'll tell you, we have, these new 55-plus residents are bringing a lot of knowledgeable people into our town, and, and I like that. We're getting some different views, different ideas, and, and they're, and they volunteer on committees and boards, and it's great. It's great for our town. They also, the council, the Center for Active Living, excuse me, Michelle will get mad at me if I don't call it the right name, and, and they volunteer up there. A lot of the volunteers come from those 55-plus communities. So, those folks, if they, they're volunteers, all these committees, and they should be treated respectfully, okay? Also, our public employees that assist them, the administrative assistants that assist those boards, should be treated respectfully. And we just had a situation recently, and I'm not gonna put a name out there, but it was in a public meeting, and we had to remove a person, and I was kind of vocal on that. And afterwards, I was thanked by committee members, by some of the public employees, saying, "Thank you very much for standing up for us." And I said it was the right thing to do. I was actually appalled by somebody's being that, you know, using F-bombs and being disruptive in committees. That's not what it's about.
Was this a committee member or a member of the public?
It was, we had somebody on the conservation. It was in one of my meetings, and we had to remove him. They got complaints. And the sad part about it, this, this went on for years, and the former boards didn't do anything about it. This board's not gonna tolerate it. We will not tolerate that. People should be treated with respect, you know, and, because how, if we let that go, how are we gonna get good people to volunteer? You know, I mean, it's, as an elected official, being treated disrespectfully goes with the job, I guess. You know, people have their opinions, so I don't wanna get into that, but, so, summarizing all, what I just said is that I think information, town information on social media is a good thing, if it's about information and facts and not somebody's opinion.
Right. And to your point about having a place for people to go for the factual information. It used to be local newspapers would cover a lot of what went on in board meetings and committee meetings, and what was actually going on in the town, and there's not nearly as much of that anymore. So, people, I think, naturally turn to social media for answers, and it's, it's easy to understand why, if something is said on social media that isn't correct, somebody might wanna correct it.
Right.
But, but that's, to your point, if it's officially, if it's official notification from an official town site, those are the facts.
Right, and you'll see that.
Refer to that site.
Chris Bardot does a great job. Chris just changed jobs, so I'm not sure who, whoever his replacement will probably be, hopefully, doing the same thing, but I would like to see an information officer.
Well, I think that's being talked about.
We've talked about, yeah.
That's one of the ideas that's.
And I'm supportive, so I'm supportive of that.
Okay, great. Question number two. On April 5th, Select Board Chair Richard Quintle penned a letter outlining the events that led up to the Select Board's March 29th 3-2 approval vote on supporting an RFP, which is a Request for Proposal, from Boston South Real Estate and Development LLC to begin their due diligence in determining the best use of the Plymouth County woodlot. He stipulates that, quote, "Since this is just the beginning of a long public process, the Select Board does not specifically endorse any specific use of the woodlot at this time," end quote. Now, many residents have mixed feelings about this statement, as the presentation by Boston South clearly outlined a thoroughbred racetrack as one of the components of the development on that land. How do you feel that this entire process has been handled so far, and what are your feelings on the proposed usage of that land?
Okay. I was one of the three votes.
Affirmative.
And how do I feel about this? I feel about it, it got leaked out, and it came before the board too quickly. It was way too, you know, quickly. We should've, they should've had more information before they presented anything to us.
"They" meaning?
The county.
The county, yeah.
The county hadn't even, hadn't even voted on it when it came before us, so it was a real quick presentation by Lauren Tripp, who was represented at this group, and we were asked to vote on moving the process forward. That's, that's the way I took it. And I just wanna start that, that we have had, economic development has been lacking for years, for 10 or 12 years, anyway, there's been no economic development. So, as a Select Board member, I think it's my responsibility, and I think Chairman Quintle does too, we all agreed, well, not, we didn't all agree, but we need to look at any opportunities for economic development. So, we had a developer, and people said to me, "You didn't read the RFP," and I was looking at a developer coming into Plymouth that wants to spend $500 million, and wants to do due diligence on the property, probably at least a three-year study, and they were gonna spend $4 to $6 million on this study, of their own money, by the way. This isn't costing the county or the town of Plymouth, any money for them to do this study. So, I said to myself, "We need a lot of information here." And I got questioned, "You didn't read the RFP." I'm looking at economic development, and I wanna see what they're proposing outside of horse racing, you know, I wanna see what other proposals they had, but, so, and we have so much, before anything can go on that woodlot, we have infrastructure there that has to be corrected, has to be fixed. So, that's the information I needed. I wanted them to come back after they, they needed a letter of approval, how I understood it, to go to the state and to go to the feds, okay, to see what they can do to fix the roads at Exit 5. So, I, it's something we couldn't delay a week or two, because it's, it's gonna take months, or maybe a year more to get the information. So, that's why I voted on it. So, the process, people keep bringing up horse racing, horse racing. It's economic development, and do I believe there'll ever be a horse track there? No, no. But there's other things that may be there, there could be a convention center there, which I'm excited about, because we need, convention center would bring tourist dollars, it would help our tourism big time, and, you know, you know, people will come in, spend money in the town, fill up our bed and breakfast, our hotels, motels, our restaurants, so it probably came, it came too quickly to the public.
So, I think that's, let me ask you a follow-up question on this. The fact, a lot of people don't really understand that Plymouth doesn't actually own that land.
No, we don't.
The county owns that land, and that's a huge piece of information that I think some people didn't get. And the fact that the county can do things that the town of Plymouth can't. The county does not answer to the town of Plymouth, the county answers to the state. So, they need permission from the Select Board to move forward with this, but it's the county that brought this forward, not the town of Plymouth.
Right.
I think what surprised people was that it just, all of a sudden, was dropped on people's laps, you know, possibly thoroughbred horse racing, where that had never, ever even been on anybody's radar, I don't think. And that, I believe, just as an observer, I think that is what caused the immediate kind of pushback of, "Wait a minute."
No, no.
"We didn't know anything about this."
Like I said in the beginning, it was too quick.
Yeah.
It was really way too quick.
So, the county should've brought that to you much sooner. Should've you also then let the public know that this is, this is something that, one of the many things that the county is looking at? If that was maybe brought months ago?
Yeah. How it should've happened is, well, Chairman, Chairman Quintle was getting calls. It was, like I said, it was leaked by one of the commissioners, and the reporter was calling Chairman Quintle, and he was getting calls, and, you know, the lack of transparency, like he was doing something behind the public's back, and that's not the case.
Right, right.
That's not the case. So, Chairman Quintle, what he thought was he was doing the right thing. We had that meeting, they came before us, and everybody was allowed to speak.
So, you tried to bring it to the public.
Yeah, well, he brought it to the.
We have to.
Because it was, we're being accused again of, of hiding something from the public, which is not the case. I found out about it, I knew a while back that it was coming, something proposal was coming, and, but I didn't look at, you know, we didn't get the RFP and all that. And there was, there was several RFPs, and six of them were housing, and, but they didn't meet the qualifications of what the county wanted.
Okay.
And I'm gonna tell you, I'd be against that too, on that woodlot right now, until, and you'll hear me later say this, until that infrastructure, the roads are fixed there, I don't wanna see anything there in that woodlot. I don't, because it's too congested right now. It's, and guess what? We have a little city opening up right at Home Depot. There's about 400 units, I believe, and I drove there the other day to see it, just so I could, in my mind, see what was going on up there. There's a lot of homes up there, a lot of apartments up there, and when that opens up, the congestion is gonna be even worse there. So, I'm really concerned about anything going there without infrastructure.
Okay.
So, and what I'm hoping is that the horse race doesn't go through, and they come up with another proposal that the residents can support, and I will be all for it, because I will not, I will not, and you're gonna hear this several times, because I wanna make clear that I am not for any proposal that the residents don't support, and that's, that's one promise I'm making right now.
Okay. All right, thank you. So, question number three. Taxes, a single tax rate for personal and commercial use, commercial development, apartment and condominium development, the work of the Plymouth Area Economic Development Foundation. All of these issues are tied together, but have varied departments and boards and committees working on different aspects of them. This doesn't seem to be an efficient method of doing business. Is there a way to combine these silos of effort into a collaborative project-based working group that hones in on one specific project? Do you believe that combining the efforts of many departments and boards and commissions could be, with a singular goal, an objective, would be a far better use of time and resources, and ultimately, a more efficient way to create positive outcomes? And if so, give me an example of what initiative or program would work using that collaborative approach.
I absolutely agree, working together. I've said that when my last campaign. I wanna get all the boards working together to, for the better of Plymouth and economic growth is really, if I get re-elected, it's one of the first things that I wanna work on. I have a meeting this Friday, actually, with the, with Steve Cole, the Economic Development, the director, executive director, with Lee Hartman, with the town manager, and myself and another selectman are gonna meet and talk about just what you're saying there, about working together, coming up with ideas, and working with all the boards to encourage and invite businesses to come to Plymouth, and make it, we wanna make it easier for them to do business here.
Right.
We have to get town hall, we have to get the permanent process streamlined, so it's easier for them, but I wanna work together and come up with ideas to do that. So, that's, it's funny, next Friday, we have that meeting.
Okay.
And it's very important.
Yeah. Okay, great. Question four. Let's talk about Plymouth's current form of government. What do you believe are its current strengths and drawbacks, and do you think it's sustainable, given all the challenges that are facing this town in the coming years?
The current form of government, unfortunately, it's not gonna change, because the chair of commission has already said they're looking to just tweak the town meeting. I believe town meeting, and I'm not afraid to say this, I was a town meeting member for seven years, we need professional government. We need, we need full-time professional government, whether that's a mayor, I'm not sure, or some kind of city government form of, with city councils that are full-time. There's too much going on in this town. There's too many issues coming up. Just recently, the fire station was an example. We almost were gonna wait another six months. It's already been a year to get that, and every time we delay it, it costs more money. And that's, I'm talking about the Manhamet Fire Station that had to get recalled, the question, to get passed. So, we have too many important issues such as that, that have to get done swiftly, because it's costing us money, something that we have to get fixed, and we have to go through town meeting. But I just think it's, you know, we have volunteers, it's town meeting, it's, you know, volunteer, they're residents, and, you know, some of them, some of them are internet-challenged and maybe don't have information that they, they need, but I don't think it's these important issues that having a volunteer legislator, legislative body is working. It's, it's just not working enough for me. It's not, not fast enough.
And it's because of the fact that they only meet twice a year, unless they have to call a special.
They meet twice a year, yeah, and too many people have agendas, I mean, there's 135 of them.
Well, now, there's gonna be even more.
There's more with the two precincts, so, 160, 18 on the, so what's that, 153?
It's being increased.
Yeah, 18.
Yeah, but at least 18, right?
Yeah, two more, yeah.
Yeah. So, there's even more.
Two more, yeah, three more.
And those, those new town meeting members aren't, need to be, you know, go through an orientation of what it means to be a town meeting member.
Right.
And I'm pretty amazed when I look at that thick book that, that they have to look through.
Yes.
To familiarize themselves with all the aspects of, all the articles, it's daunting. It really is the amount of information.
And there are some people that, that read through everything, and they're prepared, they come prepared, and I'll tell you, I can't wait till we're back into in-person, because as a town meeting member, I would go to town meeting and, and I've questioned, because I'd go through it, I'd go to the carcasses, and I'd take notes, but sometimes I would, I would get to town meeting, and whether it was just before or at recess, one of the recesses, I would talk to people who I respected, and I changed my, changed my vote a couple times because of information that I received that day.
Yep.
But I just, I'm not criticizing the town meeting members, I just think, I think we need a, we have a $270 million budget, we have so many issues coming, our growth, you know, we have, the expansion of this town is leaps and bounds, and every year it just keeps going up, and we're gonna, we're really gonna pay attention to that too, how our growth, you know, where it's going.
Right.
And so, we need full-time government, I think. I really believe that.
Now, the people that are really staunch supporters of town meeting-style government, you know, one person, one vote, that everybody has a voice.
Yeah.
And to your point about like the 400 new units that just went in behind Home Depot, that type of thing that's happening in the town. By having a town government that's not town meeting, whether it's a mayor or a city council, whatever it is, would things like that housing project, do you think, go through a whole different process of getting approved? Or would the actual boards and committees still do their due diligence, and just the deciding factor would be, rather than 150 people, it would be maybe, you know, 15 or 20?
The problem with that particular, if we're talking about that particular residential, that wasn't town meeting that was the problem. It was, they had, they had such a hard time with some of the boards to get, they were doing commercial, that's commercial space up there, and they had some commercial development there, that they got such a hard time that they said, "We're gonna go 40B." And that's, that should be one of the issues that the citizens are concerned with.
So, talk a little bit more about that.
About the 40B?
Yeah. And why?
Okay, so, this is, this is one of my.
Pet peeves?
Yeah.
Okay.
That we, that I'm, I'm trying to encourage economic development through light industrial development. We need to fill existing commercial space. We need to, we need to invite people, you know, let them know, "This is America's hometown, the businesses, and this is what we have to offer you." The quality of life, everything for your employees, whatever, whether it's some kind of incentives, tax incentives, whatever, to get commercial development. But we want it, we want it throughout the town, not in just certain areas.
Yeah.
So, we had an existing commercial space up there at Home Depot, commercial develop, doing commercial development where it should be.
Right.
And he got such a hard time, he went 40B, and there's nothing we could do about that. That has to change. That has to change. The same thing happened to Colony Place. There shouldn't be apartments up there. That should be, that should be commercial development up there, because we need the commercial tax, we need that to stabilize our residential tax.
Sure.
And if we keep going the way we're going, and I have an idea of how to do this, if we keep going the way we're going, our taxes, like they have for the last 10 or 12 years, have gone up and up every year. And they get, last year, we had $3 million in growth, economic growth, unacceptable. We, we lost, we're gonna lose $7 million from Hoholtec. So, we need to fill, where we already have commercial growth, we need to fill it with commercial development. And what I wanna do, what I propose, and one of the things I'm gonna bring up Friday in my meeting, is I wanna identify ideal land that would be ideal for light industrial commercial development, and I wanna get it rezoned. We have to go through town meeting to do that. Get it, get it rezoned as light industrial commercial development. I'm all for preserving open space, but we can't preserve all the, all the open space. We need to leave some for commercial development.
Right.
Because we need to pay for it.
Right. So, based on that, and your commercial development, and you weren't happy that a 40B went in there, where are all the people supposed to live that you want to work here in the town of Plymouth, where it's not very affordable?
That's affordable housing, what is affordable? What is affordable?
Well, is $2,500 a month for a one-bedroom apartment affordable?
It's good, it's, you know, our houses, my wife's a realtor, and let me tell you something, she has all, first time buyers trying to spend $400,000, and they can't find anything, anything.
Right, right.
So, yeah, it's a problem. It's a problem, so, you know, but we keep, we keep having residential development, but no commercial, and that's why our taxes are going up.
Right. But it doesn't have to be in tandem? I mean, if you want more, which, yeah, obviously, this, this town needs more commercial development, but to, to be able to do that, you need people to be able to work in those, unless the commercial development is something like, some type of a plant or something that is just storage, where you don't have.
Right.
People that have to work there.
Right.
It's just a nice building.
Like warehouse.
Yeah, that gives you a, a good tax base, but you don't have, you know, 200 people that have to be employed there. So, there's another question, is what type of business do you bring in that can kind of?
Well, that's what, that's what I'm gonna rely on Steve Cole for. Steve is, is like, at the top of his, his.
Yeah, he's got a lot of background in economic development.
Yeah. He's like the best at what he does in his job, so, and so, we're lucky to have him, so I'm gonna rely on him to, and I know they're working on this, there's already talk of some, some businesses coming to town, and hopefully, we can get that done, so, but he's at the top of his field, excuse me, a little blank there.
Yeah, that's okay.
So, I'm gonna talk to him and rely on him for that, but getting back to, we need all the boards, we need, let's get the businesses here, let's get the planning boards, the zoning boards, let's get everybody in the.
Conservation, everybody.
Select Board, conservation, we can work together. We can have environmental, you know, taking, you know, taking care of, we have the sustainable coordinator that we're gonna, that we're hiring.
Yep.
We'll be able to work with the boards too. But we can work together. We can have conservation and preserve open space at the same time have economic development.
Right, exactly.
We can work together.
Yep, exactly.
That's how it should be.
I agree. Okay. So you have about 10 minutes left of your 40. You can talk about anything you want or anything we haven't talked about. Any subject you want to bring up? Or why you think that you should be elected? There's four people running for two spots. And why should you be one of the two people?
Well, my first eight months, it was really, it was eye-opening. There was a lot of issues, a lot of things. And I think, I think the board, I think we accomplished a couple of things that I'm very proud of. First of all, we stabilized the town employees, the contracts. We did it swiftly, with respect. And that's not, according to what they, they all told me, the unions said, it's never, it's never been like this. It hasn't been like this for years. So we got it done. I had, at town meeting, the human resource director said, thanked me for getting it done swiftly and efficiently and having the courage to do it. And I told her at that meeting, it wasn't courageous, it was the right thing to do. We looked at the pay, the pay scale of other towns and what our town workers were making. And we found out that, and I knew it because it's one of the reasons I was running. Because for years, I'd have police, fire, DPW people telling me, you know, you got to run, you got to run. You know, I'm a union person myself and I understand that we work for less money for the benefits, okay? And we get some great town workers. We, they're the backbone of our community. So we identified, we did the, checked the pay scale of other towns. And they were way underpaid. And that's the reason why we have 50 openings right now, because people have left for other jobs. So with this new, these new contracts, we're going to retain employees. And we're not going to be a training ground for other towns. And every time we lose somebody, especially police and fire, it costs us a lot of money to retrain them.
Sure.
Okay? Yeah. So I'm proud of that fact that we got that done. And the other thing is we got, we had to replace the town manager. And that was a controversy and we were accused of not being transparent, which is not the case. A lot of it was executive session things that we couldn't talk about. And we were getting, there's a group of people that would come to all the meetings by Zoom and would just, would criticize us. And I'm not going to get into their reasons for that. But from day one, it was like that. And the story is that the town manager came to Chairman Quintle before I was on the board and months before and wanted to exit. And they worked on it to have her exit without costing the town a ton of money. I've known Melissa 17 years. I have a lot of, I was very friendly with her and I liked her. And I still like her as a person. And I just, the last few years, I just thought it was time. It was time to make a move. Well, she came to, before I got on the board, and she wanted to leave. So we worked out a deal and she was very involved in it. Her and her attorney really worked the deal out and we okayed it. And we, out of respect for her 17 years, she got a great exit package. I'm not sure it's as good as the superintendent of schools got, but it was a pretty fair, and she deserved it. 17 years of service, she deserved it. But we get accused and criticized and not being transparent. And a lot of things happened and that we don't talk about because I don't want to embarrass anybody. So, but she was treated fairly on her way out the door. She really was. Very respectfully, and the negotiation went very respectful with her. So I was proud of that. And also, I'm very proud of the new town manager that we hired.
Derek.
Yep, and that's, that's one of our second great accomplishments is hiring Derek Brindisi. He's a breath of fresh air. When everybody gets to meet him and talk to him, he listens. He's got some great ideas. He's going to help with the economic developments. And I'm looking forward because that's something we need. And one thing about Derek, and I didn't know him before.
Yeah, because he did work for the town before.
Yeah, but I didn't know him before that. And I'm going to tell you what, he's a man of action. He came, he hit the ground running when he came to town. He really did. And let me tell you, he's, you talk about, you know, he's got a new fire chief, a new police chief. The most tragic thing Pearl says, our clerk, who I could spend the next hour talking about. And I didn't know her that well before. But what she did in her short time as clerk,
Yeah.
doing that redistricting, about 12 different, you know, doing that and taking charge, Larry retired just before the elections.
Yeah.
And she did an amazing job and her staff, it was great to see. I can tell you how good a person Pearl is, just talk to her staff. Just talk to them. And I have, and they loved her.
Yeah.
And everybody in town loved her and it was a good send-off. So Derek's had, you know, he's, you're talking about getting his feet wet quick.
Yep.
So, you know, he's done that, so, but.
So you're confident that things are on the right track?
We're moving in the right track. And you know something, my thing is, we're trying to fix some problems. And I just want to move forward. And my thing is, if you hear to complain, go somewhere else. When I would talk to somebody, if you get some ideas to improve things, I don't have all the answers. But you can call, my number's out there, my email. Call me anytime with ideas. Let's fix problems and not create problems.
Right.
I really, I really believe that, so. But I'd like to, if I could, I know we only have a couple of minutes left. Just read something. I wrote this down because I want to clarify some things.
Okay.
I want to thank PAC TV and Julie Dorfson for the time here. It's, I really appreciate this forum. And to the residents of Plymouth for your questions concerning our community. I've heard from residents that change is needed, but the opposite of change is returning to the same. I am committed to moving Plymouth forward, voting on issues with informed conviction, listening to our residents and always being open to new ideas and discussion. That being said, I want to clarify something. I will never vote yes for any proposal for development brought before the select board that do not have the support of residents. I have said this on record at a couple of meetings. I've said it on my page, but allow me to be clear. I will not support a horse track in any form here in Plymouth. People, I want people to hear that. So I support exploring new sources of commercial tax revenue for our town through collaboration with others to develop an economic growth and development strategy that will positively contribute to the identity of our community. Several new small businesses have chosen Plymouth to be their home, not just in the downtown and waterfront area, but in Cedarville, Manomet, Redbrook, Pine Hills, West Plymouth and North Plymouth. These entrepreneurs recognize the value of operating in Plymouth. We are America's hometown and it is time we remind the outside businesses, business community and commercial developers of the importance of that fact. I am committed to finding ways to incentivize the use of existing commercial space, identifying ideal land for commercial development, preserving open space and reorganizing the onboarding process for new business in town. That is the change I have represented over the past eight months and will continue to represent when I am reelected. I am dedicated to service and committed to helping Plymouth continue to be the place we all love. I'm not a politician. My only interest is that of the town of Plymouth and my fellow residents. I'm not asking to be reelected because it's a stepping stone to higher office. I am asking for your renewed vote of confidence on May 21st so together, we can continue making the difficult decisions needed to position Plymouth for continued growth and success.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Charlie, for participating in this interview. And we wish you the best of luck throughout your campaign and in the election. For our viewers, thank you for joining us. If you're interested in watching replays of this interview, please visit our website, pacTV.org/elections for replay times and online viewing options, including PAC TV's on-demand and streaming service, PAC TV Prime. And please, make your choices heard by voting in the election on Saturday, May 21st. Thank you and good day.